Please stand, but would you believe this? A question. We agents to the wire, United States of America, and to your vote, which contains one agent on the God, individual for liberty and justice.
There were no adjustments to the school committee tonight. This meeting was being recorded because we have remote participation. All of our votes will be done by local. And there are no agenda adjustments with the school building committee tonight either. And this meeting also was being recorded because we have remote participation. All of our votes will be done by local. Are there any public comments tonight at the school building committee? Seeing none. First, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes from August thirteenth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four school building committee meetings.
Motion.
Motion by Rockland. Second by Dan Whitman. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, I'll take the vote. Bob Hayward, yes. Tom Hickey.
Yes.
Sandy Baldwin.
Yes.
George Cooney.
Yes.
Jim Kaufman.
Yes.
Bob Mahoney.
Yes.
Jack Manning.
Yes.
Robert Mello.
Not present.
Not present. Jose Mello.
Yes.
Tom Petrozov.
Yes.
Dustin Riden.
Yes.
Anne Salvucci.
Yes.
Keith Boyle.
Yes.
And Frank Moll.
Yes.
Thank you. And then as vote, motion carries. I'll turn it over to Kevin Sullivan for the invoices.
Sure. He's the. We've already done the meeting, so that's all set, right? Yeah. Okay. I will be brief, so I'm going to present the invoices from the previous month. As you can see, it's a combination of left field. I think that's eight thousand five hundred and then a combination of DRA, the architect, and some of their self consultants. That finished up some of their hazmat, traffic studies, and other items to complete the schematic that submits to the NSBA. And that totals one hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. I happen to answer any questions.
Devin. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve these invoices. Move Julie from Cohasset, second by Whitman. Any discussion on the invoices?
Kevin, was there any timing to the best system there? The affiliate?
Yes. There was.
A lot or?
There wasn't anything beyond what we expected, typical boiler room. And, you know, most schools in the Commonwealth that were built at a certain time had high floor heights as well. Good. Begin.
Anything else? Seeing none, I'll follow the roll. Bob Hayward, yes. Tom Hickey.
Yes.
Sandy Baldwin.
Yes.
George Cooney.
Yes.
Jim Kaufman.
Yes.
Bob Mahoney.
Yes.
Jack Manning.
Yes.
Jose Mello.
Yes.
Tom Petrozov.
Yes.
Dustin Riden.
Yes.
Anne Salvucci.
Yes.
Keith Boyle.
Yes.
And Frank Moll.
Yes.
Motion carried. Dramatic design submission update. Kevin?
Yep. So we submitted to the NSBA a couple of weeks back. I think it was in August twenty-ninth or August thirtieth deadline to keep this on schedule for the October thirtieth MSBA board directors. We submitted, they're reviewing it. We actually have a call with them tomorrow morning and then a bigger call on Monday. They're gonna take what we gave them related to the design, the schedule, and most importantly, the budget. And we made some projections based on our previous projects on how much we thought the state would reimburse, what they would exclude as ineligible, and what would ultimately lead to district share. That was presented, I think, in August to this group. And we're gonna see how accurate we learn when the state meets with us and they share their findings. So I don't expect any big surprises. So we'll have more on that server the next time we meet.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. To Kevin. Just as when I'm asked a question or when I'm talking to any groups, I'm saying that the team has ballparked the local share at somewhere between a hundred and sixty-six to a hundred and sixty-eight million. The total project budget is not a dispute. There's all of the costs. So the meeting, hopefully you'll hear a little bit on Monday, we'll see where it falls within that range. And then we will start preparing to prepare. We'll start to prepare updated town by town financial impacts. And then approach that October thirtieth board meeting where it will be official. So we will learn, we will learn more information, as Kevin said, in advance of October thirtieth. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. I'll also like, yeah, just. We've been out with a few towns doing things and just keep up the work, keep up spreading the word where we are and see if anybody's got any questions. We're getting calls, it's gonna be here before we know it, so keep pushing everybody. Okay. That it could.
I think there was one more just update, which we've already kind of discussed on the next slide, just I will schedule, which I already really touched on this. You know, we submitted the NSBA in August. The next major milestone is October thirtieth, in which they will be approving the project, which is probably the biggest milestone in that process because it secures your project, it secures your funding. And after that, as we all know, there is a big vote in January. We remain on schedule.
Keep on pushing.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Kevin, after their meeting on October thirtieth, where they set the budget, whatever, if there's any legislation between then and by the time we put the shovel around or we violate. Like I know Carl mentioned that they give you twelve hundred dollars per furniture per child, which is, if they make any changes legislative, do we get a retroactive bump on those sorts of things or is this set?
It's typically, that's not something that typically happens where you would retroactively, it would retroactively increase your grant. That being said, for the first time since inception, last year, the past legislation had increased funding limits on, say, twenty or thirty projects that all received this vote during the pandemic, where costs, inflation escalation was historic, and they gave districts, you know, a different, they increased their funding quality. So it's not impossible, but I don't, you know, it would be, you know, I would be surprised if it happened to be us. Doesn't mean we shouldn't try and there's always a chance with enough legislation, you know, and supporters, it doesn't happen.
Good. That's it.
That's it.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the school building committee meeting. Rockland. Whitman. Okay, I'll follow the roll. Bob Hayward, yes. Tom Hickey.
Yes.
Sandy Baldwin.
Yes.
George Cooney.
Yes.
Jim Kaufman.
Yes.
Bob Mahoney.
Yes.
Jack Manning.
Yes.
Bob Mello. Oh, he's not here, I'm sorry. Jose Mello.
Yes.
Tom Petrozov.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Anne Salvucci.
Yes.
Keith Boyle. And Keith.
Yep.
Yep. Sorry, Keith.
That's good.
I get going.
Yes.
Frank Moll.
Yes.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned and voted of the. School committee. School committee. Are there any public comments? In school here. Seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion to. Second. So we got Tom, we got. And Bob. Okay, so we'll turn it over. Okay. Start with Tom. Approved. Avington.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. I get my list. So. There's Avin, Cohasset.
Yes.
Hanover.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Marshfield.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Rockland.
Yes.
Citrus.
Yes.
And Whitman.
Yes.
You know. Now, when you want the treasury report. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the cover of this month, we have a group of students from the school that went to Citrus and finished some work up on our model program, painted some circles on these and don't want the last picture outside of the secret police department. First page, tax office, about three twenty million dollars at the end of August, which is, I think, we have revenues. We did the first round of billing for our member towns. We received one point six, we two of revenues from those towns, Hanover, Hanson, Marshfield. They didn't pay us by the end of August, but all those monies have been received, so there's no issues with anything along that line. Through, this is a two-month budget. July and August, we see two chapters seventy, so five years. So overall, we go with three point five ninety-seven million dollars received for the first two months. On the expenditure report, total for the two months is one million forty-three five seventy-six. Again, this is the time of year when. Because of the school, the teacher contract is a twelve-month contract that runs from Sept- September one through, or through August. What happens is that we close fiscal year due thirty. At that point, we still owe the teachers two months' payroll on their contract period. So every year we go through the process. We take whatever is owed to the teachers through the summer. We record them on the books as of June thirtieth, and we pretty much owe the teachers around the nine hundred fifty thousand, two million dollars. So that was, those are on the books for June thirtieth. Then what happens is we pay the teachers over the summer. So our top line item, which is normally our biggest, it's only three hundred forty-three thousand dollars because the teacher's payroll is not included in there. That's just administrators and other payroll that's not, not teacher contract. So that's, that's a low amount for this period. So that's the only real highlight. We did do a lot of the payments, Charlie Rockspend, over a few times with our return agent going through various things. All of our bills come up on July first, we know. So we have a seven-two thousand dollar payment towards our workers' comp premium, which is a lot lower than what we budgeted because of experience modifications and various things that have gone down. So we're very good check it out. Other than that, there's not a lot of other elements. Line five, county time, we made, we made half our payment towards our commitment to the Columbia County Retirement Board. And, yeah, so everything's going smoothly. And there's no issues with the finances. Down to line four, do we have a ninety-five thousand dollar payment towards our school and churches as well as they kind of feel. That's the report for that time.
Okay. Okay. Except for. We can watch. What was that? He's making a motion. You accept. Second. I thought it was taking over the championship. I thought it was second the agenda. Talking to the agenda. Okay. Avington.
Yes.
Cohasset.
Yes.
Hanover.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Marshfield.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Rockland.
Yes.
Citrus.
Me.
Yes.
And Whitman.
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion regarding the budget transfers. Move. And over.
Second.
Cohasset. We'll go through the roll.
I can.
Any discussion on it?
Yeah. Just when we did our whole package insurance renewal with Charlie, it's up a tad, but we had a lot of savings in the workers' comp, but some of the other insurances, the student insurances and other stuff was a little bit higher than we budgeted it for. So we'll move fifteen thousand dollars in the savings of the workers' comp into the, into the general insurance fund.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Avington.
Yes.
Cohasset.
Yes.
Hanover.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Marshfield.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Rockland.
Yes.
Citrus.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Are there any other updates, Jim?
Yeah, just again, I want to commend Janine Anderson and Pam Curtis in the business office for, this time they're there, all summer long. It's a busy time, we're closing off fiscal twenty-four, we're starting fiscal twenty-five, getting everything geared up. So they, they, they put a lot of effort and work during a portion of the summer. So anybody that has new staff come on and we'll benefit in areas to help insurance with alcohol and everything. So, yeah. If anybody's in any, great jobs.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, I will turn it over to the superintendent director, Dr. Hickey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, members of the committee, you'll hear from Sandy and Keith in a bit about the start of the school year. I'll set the tone by saying that it was a great start and we welcomed a great new freshman class. I'll point out a few things specifically in my report. I typically provide you in September with a budget timeline for the upcoming fiscal twenty-six cycle. Not much different than in years past, our cost center supervisors and department heads will start work in earnest in October, and we'll do some initial budget building in through November and December. We'll have our school committee meeting timeline, which is the next time of my report. We'll adjust the January meeting, make it a little bit later to allow for the governor's chapter seventy numbers to come up. We'll circle back to that when we, when we get closer. And we always certify our budget in February, usually after a public hearing. We have to certify a budget forty-five days before the earliest town meeting in our district. So the rhythm of the fall and into the winter is budget building, initial presentation, certify. And then, but the certification is important that you know what the state aid numbers are before, before we take that step. That's, that's nothing, that's nothing unusual. So that's the, that's looking ahead with the budget timeline and the monthly school committee dates. In terms of the building committee in tandem with school committee, at least for now, I see this rhythm continuing again where we're, we're in, we've submitted the schematic design, so I envision that for October and November and December. Unless there's something unusual, we would probably also have monthly concurrent meetings, just, just to mention that as well. I want to mention under my report that the class of twenty twenty-eight upwards of a hundred and eighty students. As of, as of last week, we still had a waiting list of seventy-six students. And the, the demand, as I mentioned, we had, I'm sorry, Sandy, were you commenting on admissions to my?
You're okay.
All right. Let me know if I step on my name.
Feel like today.
Okay. We took points of, points of emphasis. We had three hundred and forty-six applications from our nine towns for, for a hundred and eighty spots. So the demand that our, that Amy and our guidance and student services departments would say is certainly strong. And I think it's important to point that out. So we're grateful to have the support of our communities and welcome in that freshman class. And I'll talk a little bit about admissions policy under new business in just a moment.
Okay.
Also, regional agreement amendment update, I want to share with you that all nine of our communities are scheduling a special town meeting, and we have asked that the regional agreement amendment that you voted be placed on the special town meeting warrants. The dates range from Hanson's town meeting on October seventh, all the way to Marshfield's town meeting on December sixteenth. Hanover, I didn't list Hanover's date in your, in my memo to you. They are probably leaning towards December second, which will be the night of Whitman's special town meeting. But we're already making arrangements to be a very early article in one town and a very late article in the other town. And, and no traffic laws will be violated as we attempt to, as we attempt to do both. But this amendment, I'm happy to say, has been sent to communities that haven't heard anything of any concern about the four-year-old on average. So we'll keep you posted over the next three months in terms of, in terms of any updates regarding that. And, oh, and lastly, I'll turn it over now to Sandy and Keith for their reports.
Great. I'm going to pick it up. Thank you for having me, second from the principal. And we are almost a month in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And we are in era where finding teachers who will stay in the school district for long periods of time is, is, is sometimes unique. And I'm delighted to say that we have fully staff. We returned almost all of our staff last year, and we are not looking for any employees in the teaching ground at this point. So that's good news. We also, it's important because we have more students on campus than ever before. As Tom mentioned, we have about six hundred and eighty-eight students enrolled. We welcomed about a hundred and eighty freshmen, and we celebrated a hundred and sixty-one seniors in the class of two thousand twenty-five, with a remaining almost eighty to a hundred on our waiting list wanting to be enrolled here. So we, and we turn the books over to active admissions for the class of two thousand twenty-nine with open house on the nineteenth. It's well underway. Our admissions team led by Amy Dow has done a very soft launch, and we already have eighty-seven registrations before we even launched the process. We expect a record turnout with the inclusion of Marshfield as a member town and with district residents encouraged to come to our open house to learn about the potential to build a project. So it will be a busy, dynamic, exciting day, and I hope that you all can clear your calendars for at least a little bit of time to tour our school and get to know some of our staff who will be there. Our students are not just here on the building, but they are also very involved after the bells. We have two hundred and twenty-one students participating in athletics, or thirty-two percent of our student body engaged after school. We have multiple buses running after school to get our students home after athletic contests and sports, and we are delighted that they are here doing that. And we have dozens more students starting in clubs such as chess, drama, and Dungeon Dragons. And we continue to be grateful for how you support us, support us with the budget, allowing us with no fee participation and no rate of transportation. We are proud to do the work that we do, and we thank you for, for supporting you and giving us free budget.
Sorry.
Thank you. My name's Keith Boyle, Assistant Principal. Thank you for having me here tonight. In addition to the memo that's in the packet, you have this, a couple pages long, I won't read off everything that's in that memo. But I would, I would recommend that you have at the upcoming quarter that look at. There's a lot of great updates with some, some funding and activities and different things that are happening around the school that myself and Mr. Mello laid out in that, that memo. In addition, I want to bring up that with the first three weeks of school year underway, I am happy to report out that our tardies have decreased over forty-five percent when compared to the first six days of school last year. So we will be doing a monthly look back, but the first, you know, kind of sneak peek was looking at six days and to see that difference of forty-five percent improvement in tardies was, was a good sign that we are working and will continue to improve our school's tardies, dismissals, as well as staying, you know, active and hopefully leveled, if not higher, on our attendance as well, which is typically hovering around a ninety-four, ninety-five percent range. Also happy to report out that this past weekend, our Salsort Tech FFA program represented Massachusetts well at the Big E. That was the regional CTE competition, which took place in Springfield. Our nursery and landscape and floriculture teams did place in the top three. Our nursery and landscape team finished first place. Those students were Tommy Guy, Reese Hughes, Jeremy Jackson, and Jake Franchisini. And then our floor, floor culture team placed second. And that team consisted of Logan Pearl, Jackson R., Mike Sorrento, and Lucas Elguci. Those are the same students that will be going to nationals later in October to represent Massachusetts on the national level. So really nice effort, and they had a great day. Saw some pictures of you on the Facebook page. Seemed like they had a really good time with the event. Also, just want to make you aware of some upcoming school events. These events are typically laid out in our community newsletter, but just some highlights, the twenty-eighth of September, we will be hosting our FFA program, we'll be hosting a fall plant sale. The carpentry program is actually going to be joining them, where they're going to be selling some carpentry products as well. And there are their chairs, cheese boards, stuff, stuff that nature. So if you're around on the twenty-eighth, that sale is from nine to one. Hope to see you there. Also, on the twenty-eighth, we are going to be sending out the Viking food trailer over to Hanson Day from ten to two. And so we'll be active there, giving, you know, selling goods to the folks in Hanson that are present for that day and that activity. On October fourth, we have our homecoming football game, that's at seven P M. here at the school. In October fifth, we have our homecoming dance, which will start at six P M. On the sixth of October, it's a busy weekend, we will have our car show, which will go from ten to two. And also on the sixth, I wanted to make note that our cosmetology program is in the works of putting together to be at the Oktoberfest event. And Avington will, they will be doing some face painting and have a station set up there. In addition to that, October twelfth, we have the craft fair, which will take place here at the school from ten to three. We will have numerous vendors here, including the, the food truck, food trailer will be here for that event as well. And then, as Ms. Baldwin had mentioned, on the nineteenth, we have the open house, which is a big event for us. And also on the nineteenth, we also have a chocolate treat event, which we will be sending the, the food trailer, some of our students and staff over to a trunk and treat event in Hanson at the Indian Head School from ten to two as well. It's also important to note that on October twenty-second, shortly after our next school committee meeting, we've been invited to a barbecue challenge over at Africa Tech, where again, our blue trailer and our staff and students will be attending that event, where they'll do a cook-off barbecue-wise against numerous different vendors and schools. A lot of, a lot of great activities and events coming up. Again, these are laid out, these will be laid out in the upcoming community newsletters with dates and times, and if you're free and available, we will put you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. Could you list the days in October that we're doing? Thank you.
There's not a lot.
Okay. It doesn't seem like there's, it doesn't seem like there are any days left that we're just not doing anything other than the day of learning. That's great. That's great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our reports.
Okay. Next up, the admissions.
Paul. Who calculates here, but there's another grant that we got for three hundred thousand dollars. But these grants can come in and they're very appreciated and hard work of, you know, Paul, our people and staff there and Sandra and the staff and Mr. Velo and his retain these things, please, in the horticulture and metal gathering. And it looks things there that's great to get them, basically, we can go and buy.
Thank you, Jim.
Very true.
Okay, moving on, admissions policy revision.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So what you have in the document seven is a, is a draft of a change to our admissions policy. Before I explain the one area of adjustment, every year, the state requires vocational schools to reaffirm its admissions policy. So document seven has, as a cover page, a line-by-line summary of where all the changes are. And then the following pages show a strike through. To get to the heart of the matter, most of the changes are ornamental and makes for a better document formatting, some typos here and there, but it's around line two hundred twenty-two that there's one substantive change that I'm recommending to bring to that there's one substantive change that I'm recommending uh, to bring to the committee tonight and bring back to in October. And that is to adjust how we organize our waiting list. For the last several years, our waiting list, after a very prescriptive and clear process, goes something like this. For any students who still seek admission, we take all of the scores from all of the kids from all of the towns, and we merge it into one list. And what I'm suggesting is that instead of that, we move to a waiting list where the kids stay on a ranked list within their own community. And we simply go in a random order, that the next open seat would go to a student from town X, and then town Y, and then town Z in a in a rotation. And uh, the reason that I'm recommending that is because while students, students are roughly taking the same curriculum, and they're all middle schoolers certainly, it helps to control for any variances between how one school might treat their discipline code, how one student, how one school might treat their grading system. So, instead of having a merged waiting list, we would simply reapportion the seats based on who's still interested, but we would go in a, we would go in an order, so if you bear with me, if we fill the freshman class, and then we find that, okay, um, there are ten seats, let's say, that are that are unfilled, what we would do is we would, we would pull out nine town names at random, we would set them up in order from one to nine, and all we would say is, okay, how many spots we have? We have ten. The very first random town we picked was Cohasset, okay, are there any Cohasset kids on the waiting list? No, we'll go to the next town, the next town happened to be Noel. So we would have that, not, we kind of like doing that snake draft, if you do fantasy football, and and we continue in that loop. Why, so what is the change? The change is to see if this this could actually help distribute the seats more equitably, because the children are from the same community. It, what was, what motivated this recommendation was that we saw this past year that there that there was a community that had kids on the waiting list in a in a in a number, in a sizable number, but the number of students beyond their quota that got in on the waiting list seemed odd, seemed disproportionate. So I talked to our guidance director about that, and we brainstormed, geez, that seems interesting that so few of them are offered admission. And so by doing this, it's more of an apples-to-apples within the town, it's not going to change the number of seats that are available, it's just how we reapportion them. So if you have a chance, if you if you focus on lines two twenty-two to two forty-two, that's really where the language in the admissions policy is captured. I've got some other visuals that I can send along to you between this meeting and next meeting, to kind of bring that a little more to life, so that you can actually see what a simulation might look like between a merged waiting list and the one that I'm describing. It it also, and and whether or not a town has students on its waiting list, doesn't matter, because kids can apply anytime. It would just be the next time that town comes around, if there's space for that kid, then then they would be offered admission. So tonight, Mr. Chair, this is really just a roll-up, and you know, look forward to answering questions at the next meeting or in between the meetings.
I have a question.
Yeah.
On the waiting list, that'll deal with uh, kids coming into the ninth grade, right?
So technically, we also will have, we will also have waiting lists in 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 grade, we keep our waiting lists by grade level.
Right.
But the short answer is, yes, it's pretty much grade nine. We would have a grade ten waiting list, and maybe that's only got fifteen kids on it, because the shops are mostly filled.
Yeah.
And so what we're, what what the policy will say, what I'm describing to you in the last five minutes deals with rising ninth graders, we would not change what we do with upperclassmen, it's still going to be a merged list. The numbers are just too small, oftentimes, our waiting list for upperclassmen is, you take the kids who are interested, we rank, order them based on their application score, and then what Amy does is she'll start with the first student and say, you're the highest scoring rising tenth grader, I have a spot in shop X, do you want it? No, I'm only interested in something else, she'll go down the list to find the first child that's interested in that shop. And then she'll continue, oh, look, a spot opened up in the other program, so that's how, that's how it's handled, there aren't many, but that's how we handle it with upperclassmen.
But it doesn't interfere, by doing that, it doesn't interfere or take a spot for anybody coming in in the ninth grade?
Nope, not at all, not at all. So Tom, I have a question, so this methodology that you're you're recommending, is there any other schools that use a methodology like this? I I don't think there's anybody that's necess, I'd have to check on that, Joe, I mean, there are some, there are some schools who I think are looking at doing it by just a blind lottery, like you have, you you fill your towns, but but let me, let me back it up a half a step, I appreciate the question, most of our schools do not do it the way we're doing it in general. Okay. Which which I have, I have over the years found very interesting, what I mean by that is, most of, most of the schools do not distinguish by zip code. Whereas I think we historically here have said, wow, I think every community needs to know that they that there's a share, like I've gotten a lot of seats, at least to kick things off, whether my kids, my the kids from my town fill it or not, but actually, most, most schools have have historically said, we have a freshman class of two hundred, there are three hundred and fifty applicants, we're going to offer admission regardless of zip code to the top two hundred. I don't have any data to back this up, but it's just a feeling of, that can create a lot of variability with budgeting from year to year, this at least allows us to do some forecasting, and again, if the market isn't there for some communities, we take those extra seats and and we reapportion them. So this change is almost taking our first round admissions and just continuing it a little bit more, yeah. Thanks, thank you for asking, so definitely we'll pick this back up next one.
Anyone else?
Good, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Next item is the M A S C slash M A S S joint conference. Is there a motion for sending a delegate?
I'm going to make a motion to send Dan Salvi again.
Send him. Do you understand?
I absolutely, I said it, Tom, come on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna meet my arraignment, still gonna hold on it, huh? It can be more than one.
All right, well, yes.
Mr. Chair, if I might just ask, for just for for Joe's benefit, uh, there is an annual conference, uh, typically on the Cape, it's the superintendent's, M A S S Mass Association Superintendent's Mass Association of School Committees Conference, there are a series of workshops, and and Dan has uh, represented the district uh, for many years now.
Yeah.
And 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 so, along along with bringing back freebies for us at the at the at the November meeting, so expect a nice pen, a pen or a stress ball or something like that. Uh, Dan also attends workshops and also participates actively in the delegate assembly. The Mass Association of School Committees every fall puts forward a series of resolutions, and so Dan, Dan acts uh, on our behalf at 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 those events, so that's what that alphabet soup was, but I.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
No, this year, that this year, I think I'm a big portion of getting up there with all the muscles.
Yeah.
So, you know, not only in the inside of us, but the outside, the cards that go after stops on you. That, but I'm gonna push, uh, why isn't vocational, a building project vocational schools should be set at a higher percentage of reimbursement in the regular school system, because it's cost more to build a vocational.
Cost more for.
Right, so, right, so I brought that up last year, and since the meeting was going till nine thirty at night, they said, no, enough's enough, we're gonna.
We'll figure it out next year.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Addington.
Yes.
Cohasset.
Yes.
Hanover.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Marshfield.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Rockland.
Absolutely.
Citrus, yes. Whitman.
Let me think about it, yes.
Don't cause any problems going down there.
And that's, no, yeah. Yeah, go for it. I don't save the coffee center too much money, I save it a little bit. No, it's at the price, only a mile away.
Yeah.
So we, we don't necessarily shut room.
The district says thank you for the more economical attempt.
There you go. Okay, superintendent annual goals. I would ask for a motion to approve Dr. Hickey's goals for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. I'll move. Hanson.
Cohasset. Mr. Chair, if I may, just for, just for uh, just for the record, so the goals that I have, some of which I bring to you each year, some of which are are new. Uh, they're focused around some professional learning, where we want to focus our staff's uh, training and efficacy around cybersecurity training, as well as the use of artificial intelligence, those are, those are, cybersecurity is an ongoing, we have to stay vigilant, and and uh, artificial intelligence is a professional development goal for our staff for this year as well. In the area of student learning, I continue to put forward as a top priority, we would uh, we would want to see a hundred percent of our eligible students earning a third-party credential. Uh, if they're taking a test that's in their trade area, that they're passing and earning that credential. Uh, and also in the area of student learning, that we will see improvements of for students with disabilities on science and math and CAS tests. And under district improvement goals, that we will secure, uh, we'll secure an MSBA grant uh, in October, and then longer-range goals of seeing reductions of out-of-school suspensions and drop-out rate. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll call the roll. Addington.
Yes.
Cohasset.
Yes.
Hanover.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Marshfield.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Rockland.
Yes.
Citrus, yes. Whitman.
Yes.
Okay, now we move on to donations. Next item is a donation of uh, M B T and athletic programs, I'd ask for a motion to accept these donations. I'll move. Whitman, second.
Second.
You second?
No.
Oh, no. Any discussion? Did I do it? There are none. I'll call the roll. Addington.
Yes.
Cohasset.
Yes.
Hanover.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Marshfield.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Rockland. It was ten, because I know the gentleman is this. Okay. Citrus, yes. And Whitman.
Yes.
Okay, a motion carries. Any requests for action?
Now, I have just one question, when we see, we set the budget and we send it uh, to each town, I think, where it's going to cost the budget, is the, what we're spending on uh, a new high school as we're going five weeks, that's going to be added to that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, yes, that that's correct, and so.
Is it a separate line item or?
What we will do before before we certify the budget, well in advance of that.
Yeah.
One of the conversations that we'll have with the project team in concert with our financial advisor is going to be to put forward a, a possible borrowing plan, so let me, let me be a little more specific, the folks at Left Field have already projected that if we get this project in January twenty twenty-five, that we will need about fourteen million dollars cash flow in that first, in that first fiscal year. So what's likely to happen as a result of that, Dan, is we'll take that number, fourteen million, and we will say to Unibank, let's make a projection on paying what's called a bond anticipation, though, interest only. So if that were happening today, we would do, it would be at three, we're kind of sort of what we heard the Fed do today, that the markets would show about a three and a half percent interest rate. All of the, all of that information trickles down to, yes, on the debt service line for fiscal twenty-six, we would put in each town's share of the interest on that first, on that first round, and that's how we would continue to do that, but if we get the project passed, that's how we would handle it going forward, so the assessments to our towns will be operating, if there's capital, and then this sliver of the.
Okay, that'll be on the old regional agreement, not the new one? Because we haven't gone to the fore.
Uh, no, that would, that would actually be under the, that would be under the language of the, the, the new regional agreement.
Yeah.
Uh, would go into effect upon the signature of the commissioner. As it stands, the proposed amendment to the regional agreement, in the first year of borrowing,
Yeah.
we've kept the system the same.
Right.
Because we already have the data on the last three years enrollments.
Right.
So when I'm talking about a four-year rolling average, we can't really talk about that, that actually kicks in for fiscal twenty-seven and beyond. So we can say with confidence right now, your share is going to be X percent of fiscal twenty-six only, that's the only year, and that's what we'd explain when we will go around all the fineness, so that is, that is the point.
I just want to make that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And yeah, we'll need a roll call when we adjourn, I didn't put it on there, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Uh, any requests for action? Next item would be, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting, Dan?
Uh, so a motion, we're called to accept. Second.
Second, Addington. Okay, good. Motion, Addington.
Yes.
Cohasset.
Yes.
Hanover.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Marshfield.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Rockland.
Yes.
Citrus, yes. Whitman.
Yeah.